The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good afternoon. Welcome to today's town hall meeting to discuss the future of ASHA. My name is Leigh Lowry and I am ASHA's transition director. As you are aware, today's webinar format differs from our last town hall meeting that was held in person in Myrtle Beach. As a result, we have allocated the time for questions and answers a little bit differently. Today's session will be 60 minutes in length. We want to ensure that we get through all the material today and address your questions. Therefore, we will spend about 45 minutes presenting information about the future of ASHA and we'll circle back and address audience questions for the final 15 minutes or so. As you listen to today's presentation, we encourage you to use the questions portal to submit questions throughout the webinar. In the Q&amp;A portion of our session, we'll address as many questions as we can in the time allotted. All questions will be addressed in the FAQ that is posted on our homepage. If new questions arise from today's presentation, we will add them and address them in the FAQ which will be refreshed on our homepage within the next two days. Also, today's town hall meeting is being recorded and it will be posted on our homepage by tomorrow. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to ASHA president Linda Morse. Linda?
Good afternoon. First, I want to thank you for spending this hour with us. This is an issue that we know is important to all of us. I want to acknowledge the board members who have been able to join us this afternoon. Sandy Clarenbeek, who is advocacy Linda Calvert-Olsen with councils, Bridget Clemente with organizations, Alex Fraser, our independent, Jeff Clark, our past president, expecting to see David Birch also, and Sharon Miller from the board. And then you'll be hearing today from Ty Ortman, who has been the chair of our reorganization committee and also our bylaws committee, Sharon Murray, who is current chair of finance, Holly Hunt, who is president-elect. And I would also like to acknowledge the presence and contributions of Terry O'Toole, who actually was a member of our transition committee as we discussed many of these issues. So, with that being said, we have three things that we'd like to accomplish this afternoon. First, we'd like to provide you with an overview of the current status of the organization. Secondly, we would like to talk a little bit about the changing landscape of a professional association and how these changes are impacting ASHA. And then finally, we'd like to present a new vision for ASHA. There's one question that has been at the forefront of these conversations and one of the things that we think is most important and that is what future do we want for our nation's children and youth? And so we'd like you to keep that in mind if you have this conversation and we'll come back to this question at the very end of the presentation today. So let's start off with where are we now? And to talk a little bit about that, I'm going to turn this over to Sharon Murray, who is our current chair of finance. Sharon?
Thank you, Linda. Good afternoon, everyone. This is just to give a really quick background and framework for many of the changes that we are proposing today. The reality is revenue for ASHA has been decreasing over time and we are currently in a situation where change must occur or will be in pretty dire circumstances. You can see on the screen, the cause for this is, you know, there's a multitude of reasons. We've had decreased membership across all categories over time and certainly decreased income from grants, publications, and even our annual conference. We also have seen an increased number of submissions to JOSH, this is a good thing actually, from international sources, and yet we still call ourselves the American School Health Association. So that's a trigger for some potential thinking. And finally, we do have organizational governance structures that have limited our ability to be a more agile organization, to be nimble and to act quickly. So all of that has led us to really think that we need to move to more of a cause-based framework to broaden interest in our organization and the work that we do and that we advocate for, and also, very importantly, to increase revenue opportunities through memberships, through sponsorships, and also through partnerships. Now I'll turn it over to Holly to talk about the changing landscape.
Thanks, Sharon. Good afternoon, everyone. As I'm sure most folks on the phone realize, the landscape for school health has changed significantly over the years. Now, we have a number of professional organizations that are vying for members and working to meet the needs of both students and those working in schools. And while they don't meet all the varied interests of those attracted to ASHA, they are changing to meet the potential constituent interest. And so with limited resources, we really need to think about how we meet a niche that others can't and improve our responsiveness in meeting those current and potential members' needs. As you all know, there has been a decline in resources, programs, and positions in school health, both at the federal, state, and community level. There have been a number of budget challenges that have resulted in a decline in the school health workforce. There's been a gradual decline in state education agency and local education agency school health leadership positions. While we still have a variety of innovative, effective, and efficient school health programs, large-scale national and state school health programs are not supported as well as they were in the recent past. Technology has changed. Traditional communication, training, and technical assistance models are all different now in large part due to advancements in technology. I mean, we have a real opportunity to improve our ability to respond to those changing needs and then really focus on the future generation of practitioners through updated social media and other new technology methods. We have to improve our ability to respond to the needs of current members and those joining our profession. The methods and strategies that have served one generation of school practitioners have to be adjusted to meet the needs of the next generation. The way people learn, communicate, connect, and derive meaning from their profession has changed over the years and we have to accommodate these changes to be successful. An organization now has to meet both the personal and professional priorities of its members. No longer is the day when folks could be members of multiple organizations. They have to pick one and ensure that it's in their best interest, both personally and professionally. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back to Linda.
So one of the first things that we would like to present to you is a new mission for the organization. And the mission that you see in front of you essentially says that our mission is to transform all schools into places where every student learns and thrives. Now, a lot of thought went into this mission because it is significantly different from the current mission that we have, which is really focused primarily on building the capacity of our members in a number of different ways. And so it tends to be more internally focused within the organization rather than externally focused. Next slide, please. So what does this mean as a mission and how is this different? Well, the first thing is that this mission establishes a cause. It establishes a cause that we can recruit people who might not necessarily be a member of our organization currently, but that they would buy into this as a mission. It shifts that building of capacity of our members to building the capacity of schools. And this is what we've always said that we're about. It makes a bold statement about the connections between health and education and it helps us to engage a more diverse audience. So as we've thought about the mission and how the mission changes us as an organization, we had many conversations about the name of the organization. And one of the problems that we're finding right now with a lot of professional associations and nonprofits is that traditional organization titles limit us and somewhat confine our mission and reach. And so, as Holly mentioned earlier, in a time where social media dictates everything, we really need a very clear graphic identity. And when we came on board with Colter, one of the first discussions that the board had was about our current brand and logo and the fact that it is dated, it's not very vibrant, and it doesn't really represent the passion that the organization possesses and represents. And that was one of the first comments that I got from the Colter staff is that the logo doesn't seem to align with the energy that comes from the members when they talk to either members of the board or those of you perhaps that they talked to at the conference in Myrtle Beach. And finally, the name lacks a call to action. The current name is rather passive rather than being something that gets people excited about a cause and getting them to want to participate. To sort of take this a little bit further and to break this down into pieces about the name, if you look at our current name, first obviously is "American." And it implies to people when they read that that there's perhaps a limited perspective and limited membership. Now, historically, we have had some international members and of course, we have experienced a great influx of international submissions to JOSH. But the word "American" kind of ties us to focusing only on schools or school health or healthy schools within the context of our own country. So it lacks an international appeal. Why would someone from another country want to join our association? And really doesn't address the entire issue around globalization and the fact that with, again, social media, the World Wide Web, and all of that, the communications can go far beyond what we traditionally had under the old model. Same thing can be said for the word "association." There are all kinds of names that you hear: association, organization, coalition, partnerships, all of the above. But the word "association" sort of implies that there is membership criteria and there's limited access. And if you don't fall within certain distinct categories, then you can't be a member of the association. It also applies a very rigid structure and a high level of bureaucracy. And we have had a great deal of difficulty, as was mentioned earlier, in trying to be proactive and to move more swiftly. And this is what's absolutely necessary when you are housed in the DC area. Decisions are made very quickly and so the rigid structure and bureaucracy is difficult for us. And then finally, just the concept of school health, it sort of implies that this is a sort of a prescribed program for schools to implement rather than looking at this in a more holistic, child-centered approach. Which takes us to issue two, the proposal of a new name. We put before you the proposed name Healthy Schools Now. You can see that this is much more colorful and much more attention-getting than the logo that you see at the upper part of your screen with the current name. And a lot of people have said to us, okay, so why this name? Why did you decide to change the name of the organization? So in a similar way that we looked at the American School Health Association name, the word "healthy schools" implies that we're addressing the needs of the whole child, that we're looking at this through a comprehensive, coordinated, and collaborative approach, more holistic rather than piecemeal or single-issue-driven, and that we're looking to impact students, families, staff, and the community. And obviously, the word "now" is a call to action. So Healthy Schools Now becomes a more cause-based name for the organization rather than a professional association. Along with that, we've added a new tagline and the new tagline is "Transforming Schools, Transforming Lives." Once again, we are trying to connect ourselves to the place where all of this activity is to occur, and that is in schools. The words "transforming schools" and "transforming lives" implies that healthy schools impact the future of every student, that if schools are a healthy place, then they're more effective in achieving the mission of education, the systemic change can improve the health of the entire school community, and that healthy schools and healthy students are the foundation for healthy futures. So we really see this as transformational and aligning much more effectively with the Healthy Schools Now name, which what it might look like together is on the next slide. Now, this is not necessarily what the name and the tagline would look like. We actually have looked, the board has looked at a number of different potential logos and we've played around with that, but we've not made a firm decision on any of that pending the vote from the membership on the name change. But we wanted you to see what this might look like and how this might be used again on Facebook or on Twitter or on other forms of communication that we would now be using more frequently with the association. So with that in mind, it's given you a sample mission and I've given you a sample name that we're recommending. And I'd like to introduce Erin, who's going to talk a little bit about successful rebranding and the Colter experience with that. Erin Fuller?
Thanks, Linda. This is Erin Fuller with Colter. And of course, we're so excited to be working with ASHA and leadership and the membership. Really quickly, we wanted to just give two samples of work we've done with two national organizations, obviously different from ASHA in many ways. The first that you'll see is the National Child Support Enforcement Association, or NSEA. NSEA, their mission is the belief that both parents are responsible for the emotional, educational, and physical well-being of children. And they represent kind of the community of support and professionals at the educational, government, and community level and helping ensuring that happens. And as you can see, their logo, like many that are in, I would say especially the mission or cause-based nonprofit space, was done one color. And it was back at a time where we paid extra to have extra colors for things and so there's a lot of blue logos that are out there still. It was not an incredibly diverse graphic and it didn't really speak to what the organization did, although advocacy was a key component. It really was focused around creating that strong community professional support. And so we worked with them to reposition not only the look and feel of NSEA, which you see there in the logo, but far more importantly, how the organization represented and presented itself, how it spoke about itself, how it told the story both of the organization as well as the need for a robust child support community. And as a result of all of that work, one of their key metrics was really how engaged they were in key advocacy conversations on a state and federal level. And they have found as a result of that overall repositioning, which included a brand update, although not a name update, it's been very successful for them in a variety of ways. The other example we have that I wanted to show you was the former Public Broadcasting Management Association. We worked with them when they came in a few years ago and just incredibly dated. Media is a challenging industry to work with, obviously, because of the huge changes in media that have happened. The word broadcasting, that little jagged edge of the A which kind of calls to mind radio signals of days past, and really working with the organization to determine that they were really focused on professional education specifically for the managers and financial managers of our public media stations. And so a shift to PMBA, which now is the Public Media Business Association, using both those keywords, obviously having that MBA in there, that definitely implies overall professional development and aspirational learning, was something that's really helped them create a better focus on education. And so we wanted to give you a few examples, not to say that this is where we would steer ASHA, and I think you can see these are two very different organizations and different kind of looks and feels and mission, but more to say that it's a really exciting process to work with any organization that's looking to better position or more strongly position themselves in a crowded marketplace, which is what I think ASHA definitely occupies. And so we've worked hard on our end to help with work with the leadership to identify those and we would continue to do so throughout this process. So with that, I will turn it back over to you.
Great. Thank you, Erin. This is Ty Ortman and want to take it into the next phase. And first of all, interject and just thank Colter for the work that they have done in supporting us. We've been very fortunate to have the expert guidance and support of Colter as we've gone through these recommendations and what we're bringing to you today. And what we want to talk about now is how we support the infrastructure or how we support the vision that we just explained to you, the new mission, the new vision, and the new approach, and the new way of doing business with an infrastructure that works. And this takes us back to the roots and where this conversation started. We've been talking about reorganizing for three years and this is the culmination of a very lengthy deliberate conversation that we've had for a very long time. And our new support system, we really want to focus on three different aspects of the support system to support the new organization that we've been talking about. And the first one is opportunities for member engagement. The second one is a streamlined leadership structure. And then the third is a process that supports more efficient business operations. So starting first, next slide, please. So starting first and talking about member engagement, the first thing is what we're introducing are called networking communities. If you look through the bylaws on the website, the new revised and restated bylaws, you're going to notice that the networking communities are not mentioned in the bylaws. And that's because we envision these as a virtual networking community. They're not an organizational structure. They're different from what we think of now as sections and councils where they're a group of people within the organization that have an operating code and have specific jobs or tasks or things that they have to accomplish. Really what we try to do is identify people, groups of people, in how they interact with school health. And we will create virtual communities that support those collaborations and networking. So think about social media, think about blogs, online forums, town halls, tracks at the conferences that are all related to these four networking communities. And we propose those four networking communities at least at baseline, the administration, coordination, and leadership, research and emerging issues, programs and services, and teaching and learning. So what we envision is that each one, each of our members or each person who's associated with us would identify with at least one of those communities of people based on how they interact within the network or within the association. Each of those communities would have a facilitator, one or more facilitators appointed by the board that leads the discussion, stirs the conversation, and represents the interests of that community through communication with the board as a liaison in that formal capacity. But again, we want those to be nimble, flexible, and fluid so that we can make changes as the profession changes, as school health changes, as media changes, all the things we've talked about. We know those things are emerging things and we want them to be very fluid and flexible and be able to make changes to these as necessary and needed. The other opportunity for member engagement is organizational committees. In our current structure, you might know that we have a lot of committees. Some of the committees have very specific charges, some of them have very broad charges, some of them have varying members on them, some of them have different ways and methods of appointing leadership. Sometimes the leader of a committee is on the board of directors and sometimes they're not. Sometimes they have overlapping responsibilities, sometimes they don't. And so we looked at all of our operational practices and all of the things that we know we need to accomplish within our organization and we've come up with four organizational committees: advocacy and coalition, professional development, research and publications, leadership development and recognition. And what we propose is that having each of those committees chaired by a board member with responsibility or the number of people on each committee decided based on the workflow and demand. Next slide, please. Supporting that is a new leadership structure. And when I talk about leadership structure, I'm referring to the board of directors. So very significant changes in how we are recommending that the board of directors be elected or appointed. We are recommending an 11-member board of directors, which is a little smaller than our current board of directors, but that we ask that each of those 11 members be elected as general positions or general directors to the board. There would be six people elected in even years and five people elected in odd years. Each year before the, the other change would be that they, moving to a calendar year election cycle, so the board members would be elected in the last quarter of each year to take office January 1st of the following year. And they serve for a term of two years. So again, six people elected in even years and five in odd years. Prior to their starting office or prior to their initiating office by December 15th of each year, the board would convene for a preliminary meeting, honored before December 15th of each year, to select the officers that will serve in the following year. The officers would be president, vice president, secretary, and the treasurer, and again, elected from within the board members. The board would also appoint the members of the governance and finance committees. Those committees would be chaired by the vice president, chairing the governance committee, and the treasurer, chairing the finance committee. That takes those, the articles and bylaws committee and the finance committee, which are currently committees that operate outside of the board structure and bring them inside the board structure and make sure that the board of directors has very clear, direct, and oversight of the operations and governance and within the finances of the association. Board members would be elected to two-year terms with one-year committee or officer appointments with the option of renewing committee or officer appointments. So for example, if a committee chair was appointed for one year and they were doing a really great job, as long as they continued to be elected by the membership of the association would continue to be eligible to serve in that and be elected to serve as the chair of that committee. So that's a very streamlined approach and again, provides, this structure provides us flexibility in how we allocate the leadership of the association, looking at maximizing skill sets and abilities of people who are willing and able to serve in positions within the board. And if you could, the next slide, please. And then the last thing that we wanted to talk about is improved processes and business operations. In our current bylaws, we list a lot of things that are things that really shouldn't be etched in stone or etched in bylaws. So things like our sections and councils where we really can't make changes to the sections and councils because they're dictated and outlined in our bylaws. The same would be true with awards. You really can't make a whole lot of changes to how we do awards because things are outlined in the bylaws and it requires a vote of the full membership to make changes. In terms of best practice and being flexible and nimble and adjustable and fluid as an organization and being able to meet consumer demand and interests of the membership, we propose creating a board policy manual, a manual of policies and procedures that are updated on a regular basis. This would outline strategic visioning, goals, and planning, all aligned with the organization's vision and mission, and a cohesive approach to operating codes and processes for all association business. So we're really excited about the opportunity that having a policy procedures manual provides to writing everything into the bylaws and being tied to a rigid structure. Next slide, please. So again, covered a lot of these things and kind of why we're proposing these changes. It is based on best practice of association governance. Again, for the last several years, we've looked at other associations both in our space and in general. And we've also been very fortunate to have the professional advice and counsel of Colter and looking at what other associations are doing and what is best practice. It honors the time and commitment needed to serve by providing flexibility and fluidity in volunteer service. It improves capacity for networking, advocacy, and leadership, which are really what the things that we're trying to do and really need to emphasize. And then lastly, it streamlines our structures based on the size and capacity. If we look at our current organizational structure, again, it was designed in a time where we didn't have the advantage of social media and the internet and email, and also at a time when we were a much larger organization with many more resources and much more capacity than we currently have. And so this has really become a necessary move for us to streamline our capacity. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Holly, who will talk about next steps. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Holly, who will talk about next steps.
Thanks Ty. So next, you all will have the opportunity to vote on four questions. And we do hope that every member will vote, very important. First, it will be to approve or reject the amended and restated bylaws. Second, to approve or reject the plan to ensure continuity of leadership. And this is only if revised bylaws are approved. Third, approve or reject the new mission statement. And then last, approve or reject the new name. And so now I will turn it over back to Linda.
Actually, I think that one was for Sharon.
Yeah, I think.
Sharon, I'll go back to you on vision.
Thanks Holly. Hi everyone, this is Sharon again. And as you can see, we are passionate about this new vision for our organization. Healthy Schools Now believes that we can transform schools and transform lives through greater alignment, integration and collaboration between both education and health as well as multiple sectors. This vision more fully articulates what we all work to transform every day. It more fully articulates the impact that we hope to have on a daily basis and also the outcome that we're working toward again every day. Healthy Schools Now believes that every school can be a safe and supportive place for students to learn, work and play. We believe that schools can be a place that nurtures both health and a love of learning and a place where each and every child and every family has the support to improve their health and subsequently improve the health of communities. So again, we, go to the next slide please. We ask that we think about as healthy schools professionals, what future do we want for our nation's children and youth? And with that, I turn it over to Lee and Linda, thank you.
This is with Morse again. And I just wanted to add a few things. I think, you know, we've hit you with a lot of information. If you've had the opportunity to read the material that we posted on the website, I'm sure you still have some questions. If you haven't, some of this may seem somewhat superficial and I would encourage you to go on to the website and read all of the material that's there, in particular the FAQ, because questions that you may have may be answered in that FAQ. But one of the things that I would like to say to those of you who are, that have some concerns about one or any of these changes, is that the organization is in a position where it needs to reinvent itself. We can no longer stand on our laurels and say that we've been around for 80-plus years and we are the leader, because quite frankly, we don't have the structures in place or the resources right now to take that lead. And if we want to return to a time when we are a well-respected, well-organized organization that is ready to put itself in a position as the leader in the DC area in promoting healthy schools and the health of kids, we have a lot of work to do. And we need to be able to seek out sources of funding. And frankly, the field is extremely competitive. It's not what it was 10 years ago. There are numerous organizations, some of which are very targeted and single-issued organizations, others which have a broader focus. But we are competing with many, many organizations for, in some cases, the same pots of money that existed 10 years ago. And in other cases, new money for which we are not in a position to apply. And so without that external source, we have to rely on membership dues as a very big chunk of our income. And as Sharon spoke very early on in this conversation, our membership dues are down significantly to the point also that I think it's important for most of you to realize that roughly one-third of our members are life members, which means potentially that they may have paid that life membership many, many years ago and we're providing services, but we really don't see any income on an annual basis from those membership dues. So there are many things that have contributed to the situation where we are right now. And what we are really looking to do is to sort of resurrect this organization so that it can take its rightful place in the DC area, which is one of the reasons why we moved to the DC area. The situation that we have right now in terms of our ability to be able to be proactive or to react quickly to the kinds of things that happen in a very fast-paced, electronic, social media-driven world, we do not have those structures in place. And so we hope that these bylaw changes will help us to facilitate that as well. So once again, I want to thank you for being on today's call, for taking the time to be interested in the future of the organization. And we welcome at this time, any questions or comments that you might have. And Lee, I'm going to turn it over to you at this point.
Okay, great, thanks Linda. So I've been monitoring the question queue and I don't see any questions at that, at this time from anyone. And what I think I'll do is I'll just move into, oh, here is one. I will go ahead and send this one. The question Linda for you is, what is the current membership by discipline?
And I can actually tell you that, or at least pretty darn close to it. Let me, let me just give you a few ballpark figures here. We have approximately 750 to 800 members. There are some members who are organizational members that aren't counted in this number. Of that number, approximately 175 of them are lifetime members and approximately 25 are retired members. We have approximately 400 professional members and about 81 student members. And the student members are kind of reflect graduate degrees, undergraduate degrees. The student membership is kind of all over the place. Within that, within that group, we have, the largest percentage of our members are in the Health Educators, designate themselves as Health Educators. After that, we have about 100, oh, 368 roughly individuals who were members of the Health Educators section, 113 who were representing the School Nursing section, 85 members who identify as School Health Coordinators, 26 physicians and nine that are in the Mental Health section. Now we also have individuals who don't join a section. So there are some that are not represented. The other thing, when you look at our membership data, is that we tend, as many professional associations tend to be, tend to be very gray. We tend to be people who are more at the end of their career rather than in the early part of their career. And Holly sort of alluded to that, I think, when we talked about the differences, generational differences in employment and their professional commitment and also the personal and professional competing priorities that individuals have.
Okay, thanks Linda, we've got a few more questions. This one is, this person, oh, hang on a second. It says, "These are some pretty significant changes. Is ASHA shortly out of business if we don't take this path?"
This is Linda again, I'll take this one because this is a tough question. I'm not going to say that ASHA is out of business, but we have been working with Colter to develop a new business model. When we came onboard with Colter in August of 2013, one of the first things we started on was a new business model. And we know that the current way that we do business, collecting membership dues and not taking in significant sources of outside funding will not carry us very long. That doesn't mean that the organization would close, but it may mean that we would significantly need to make changes as to how we do business.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next question is, "Did ASHA leadership discuss the possibility of combining with any other organizations and the positive or negative outcomes?"
I can tell, this is Linda again. I can tell you that in, in 2012, 2013, you may recall that we brought in an external interim executive director whose primary responsibility was to do an assessment of the organization and make recommendations to the Board. And one of the recommendations that was made to the Board was to explore the possibility of a merger. Another was to go with an Association Management Group and to remain independent. And at that time, the Board, based on the information that was shared at that time, opted to seek out an Association Management Company and remain independent and then contracted with Colter in August of 2013 to provide those services.
Okay, thanks. All right, I'm going to, I have another question and I'm going to, I'm actually going to ask this one of Erin. It's, the person says, "I'm in support of the changes, but I wonder about brand confusion with the proposed name." Your thoughts?
Great, thanks, this is Erin Fuller with Colter. And I think that's a great question. I think that awareness of intellectual property is important, especially as we know that it can be very confusing in terms of searches. We do know that Healthy Schools is somewhat of an active, a phrase in active use right now with organizations on both the local level and some key jurisdictions as well as gaining some national traction. As part of our process, we work with an IP attorney here in DC who works to make sure we can both file the name appropriately that it's not considered overstepping or overlapping on other organizations' names as well as do things like securing an Internet domain and making sure to protect the copyright of both the name as well as associated trademarks and other collateral. So we absolutely have had discussions around that and we will continue to make sure to give that due diligence in our process as well. Lee, you're up.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, here's one. I may have missed it, but who's responsible for the nominating committee? This is one of the most important roles of the Board. Linda, can you take that?
The nominating committee under the new structure would fall under the Governance Committee. The Governance Committee is chaired by the Vice President of the Board and a Chair of the Nominating Committee would then be, and not, members of the Nominating Committee would be selected. As with every other committee under the new structure, we would outline in detail all of this in the policy manual so that we would have the flexibility to make sure that the nominating committee was representative of the organization.
Okay. Okay, sorry, there's quite a few questions coming in. A key element of the organization is the Journal of School Health, an element with global recognition and global participation. I did not hear anything about the placement of the journal in the future organization. Linda, can you speak to that?
I would say absolutely that the journal is the healthiest part of this organization and there has been no discussion to change the journal. We have had discussions about the possibility of having other publications of some type, whether they be electronic or otherwise, that might appeal to other audiences beyond the journal. But there has been no discussion to change or eliminate the journal.
I can just add real quickly to that, it's placement within that is within the committees. There is a Research and Publications Committee and we envision within that committee, there's a subcommittee that is, would be similar to what we have at the Editorial Board now. Again, chaired by a member of the Board of Directors to keep that as a prominent feature of our, of our organization, our association. To Linda's point, it is the healthiest thing that we have going for us right now.
Okay, great, thanks Ty. All right, here's another question. How will changing name, stated mission and bylaws improve membership and/or funding? Who will be new or expanded target audience?
I guess when this one goes back to me too. This is Linda again. Well, first off, changing the mission and changing the name helps to give us again, that cause-based focus. And one of the conversations that we've had throughout this process is what is our impact on schools? We talk a lot about being the multidisciplinary interdisciplinary organization, but as you can see from our membership, we've lost some of that. And so we felt that by changing our mission to focus more on schools and to have a stronger cause that people could identify with, we would be able to solicit members and support from other groups. We might have parent members or corporate members or community-based partners, but it would allow us to attract a different group of people. We tend right now in our membership to be very much higher education-driven and as Holly mentioned, we've had a significant reduction in membership from K-12 sectors and from state sectors as positions have been lost. So we were looking to see how we could actually reach out to sectors beyond the usual in order to expand our reach. How does that impact us in terms of funding? Well, right now, if a funder looks at our mission statement, our mission statement in so many words says that we're building the capacity of our members. It's a real internally-focused mission statement. Whereas the mission statement that we're proposing looks beyond our own members and looks how we can actually impact schools. So that yes, we can still build the capacity of our members, but we're also looking at how we can build the capacity of schools and communities and those who work in them. And so it allows us to have a bigger reach. And that might make us more attractive to grant funders and foundation funders as well.
Great, thank you. Here's a question about the awards. Will they change with the new name and the structure? Linda?
We have not discussed the specifics of the awards, but one thing I will tell you is that when Ty shared the slides of the Board Committees, the Leadership and Recognition Committee structure is where the awards would be housed. And that structure would also include scholarships and future leaders. And currently, the Awards Committee does not have representation on the Board. So this would actually have the Awards Committee have a Chair, a Liaison that has a direct pipeline to the Board. It would also pull in all the awards under one umbrella, which has been a conversation that's been ongoing for quite some time so that all of the procedures and timelines and whatnot can be standardized.
Great, thank you. All right, I have another question, which I'm going to direct to Erin because I think that she can help answer this one. This says, "This change, which I support and think is essential to connect us to the mission of schools, will take a considerable marketing effort. How will this be done?"
Thanks Lee. I think that in some ways, we're already laying the groundwork and making sure we start to position ASHA differently. Many of you in the call hopefully receive and enjoy receiving the new School Health Action biweekly newsletter. And the ability to integrate both aggregated outside content as well as promote ASHA news has been really important for the organization and helps us really be able to start tracking in meaningful ways what kind of content members engage with, want more of, want less of, etc., which will then in turn help guide our process as we redevelop ASHA's website. Right now, the website is an interim site, temporarily hosted, leveraging a different technology system. And we look forward to really revitalizing that site moving forward. At the same time, we know that a website right now, you really don't draw people to your site. Instead, you have to be engaged in a process of pushing information out. And so one of the things that staff and leadership are doing is really looking at content, both from Josh, previous conference presentations, you know, launching the new webinar series, etc., to make sure we have the ability to push content out and repurpose and reposition content that's been used in the recent past to continue to engage members and to continue to give people greater value for their membership. So all of that is really strengthening ASHA's current, you know, what I would say, communications and content infrastructure. And I think that has to be the essential first part of that process. The second part is then making sure that people understand that there is a there there. And so pushing out the message about a new revitalized and differently focused or updated ASHA. ASHA to current lapsed and prospective members, as well as new communities of interest that both the board has identified and will also be further refined during the business planning process. So there definitely is a plan for it. I think that internally, for someone who's already a member like yourself, after the question, you have and will continue to see a lot of changes in the next three to six months. That will then kind of get us ready for primetime so that we can better push that out once we're able to do an internal soft launch and make sure that everything's set, and we have the capacity, quite frankly, to manage all of the new folks that we hope and plan to attract into the new model.
Great, thanks, Erin. Okay, here's a question. It's a real long one, so I'm going to summarize it a little bit. And I think it goes back to, I believe, a question that we've already responded to on the FAQ, but really, it talks about the fact that the new name, Healthy Schools Now, sounds a little bit more like a grassroots organization rather than the professional association. And because of that, there's concern about placing that membership on their CDs, and how do we ensure that, and actually, will this be a place for professional membership? And I meant for that for you, Linda.
I'm sure you did. I'm sure you did. Conceptually, we see this as an organization that can meet the needs of professionals and non-professionals, anyone who is interested in supporting the cause, that every student deserves a healthy school. And yes, it does make it a little more challenging, but again, as we said earlier, we still plan to maintain and hopefully expand JOSH in the future. We have some ideas about some of the international submissions that we've gotten as well. We still are going to have a focus on professional development, and I know that that is really important for those who are concerned about their professional responsibilities. We don't know going forward. We made some changes to this year's conference. We want to see how those changes work out, but we have to rethink the way we do professional development as an organization, because those commitments have changed. Employers are not supporting travel for individuals, so we're looking at different ways of delivering professional development. So I think that those opportunities will still be there, embedded in the structures, as well as opportunities for those individuals like parents or other community-based organizations and individuals who want to support the simple cause, that is, every child deserves a healthy school.
All right, thanks, Linda. I've got another one that I'm going to direct to Erin. "How do you transition from the old name to the new name?"
Great. Well, this is, like anything else that we would do, we would have kind of a marketing and editorial calendar around the launch of a new name. And so it's somewhat similar to the marketing question that I just handled in some ways. But what we would do is we would announce the new name if that comes through with the votes, and we would launch that name and then work, and we would not launch it until we had an identity, a visual and graphic identity for the new name with a new logo. What we traditionally do is, for instance, if you went to the website, you may see what we call a rotating image. So it may have the current ASHA logo with the new name and new logo that rotates for a period of time, say six months, and then as of January 1, 2015, we would then firmly transition to the new name and new logo. I know that many of us are watching the evolution of AFR to SHAPE right now, and you'll see that they use both names, sometimes interchangeably, in a way to kind of get everyone familiar to using and referencing the new name in their jargon prior to making kind of that hard stop or commitment to the new name. I would see it being at least a six-month rollout process to make sure that people have comfort with that. And then also, I think a part of that, too, is honoring the legacy of ASHA. I think if other groups we've worked with, we make sure we capture the former name in kind of the about and history section of the organization, as well as concisely explain the need and reason for a change, so that if people are Googling the old organization name, et cetera, they're still able to find that group on the internet even with a new name and a new identity.
Great, thank you. All right, we have some more questions. I'm going to, this one's come through in a couple of different questions, but just talking about sort of the idea of healthy schools, and we're seeing it, it's being used in a couple of different organizations' names, and how will ASHA differentiate itself from some of those organizations? Can you speak to that, Linda?
I can. I think that we have an opportunity here to define what we mean by healthy schools. There are a number of organizations out there with the term "school health," "healthy schools," or any other combination in them, and many of them are single-issue driven or do not have the history and the legacy and the professional expertise that we have in our organization. And I think that unfortunately, what happened with some of the transitional things over the last few years is that we've been somewhat on the outside looking in, and the change of the grade school health model and the conversations that have taken place around the connection between health and learning. And so we need to step back, and we need to define healthy schools the way we think they should be defined. And we need to be assertive, and we need to take our rightful places to table. And I think that that is a really strong and important outcome of this activity. If we simply change our governance structure and our committee structure and move the players around on the chessboard, I'm not so sure that we will make the inroads that we need to make very quickly in a very, very competitive market. And it's hard to think of a professional association as a business in a competitive market, but trust me, from where I sit, it is. And it's extremely competitive, and we need to step up to the plate very quickly and make it well-known how we define healthy schools.
Okay, thank you. All right, here's a question. "When will we see the proposed new logo?" And I'm going to actually turn that over to Erin.
Great, thanks, Lee. I think that our plan would be to work with a small subcommittee of leadership and staff to develop that. As we all know, designing something creative via large committee is usually not incredibly effective. And so we would look to develop a creative brief and work with a team of designers through a process that we've used quite frequently, and then narrow that down and look to get input prior to launching that. And that would be part of the visual identity component that I had discussed earlier.
Okay, thanks, Erin. All right, we have, it's 3:58. We have time for one more question, and then we're going to wrap up. So the last question is for you, Linda. "Will the total disclosure of the votes be made?"
I would say that we will. In other words, I guess what you're asking me is how many people voted and how many people voted for each piece?
Right. I believe that's what it says.
I don't see why I couldn't.
Right. I think that we can do that.
Yeah.
Without a problem.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so this concludes our Q and A session. There are a number of unanswered questions. We realize that, and we appreciate all of your participation. This is great. This is what this is for. And as I mentioned at the top of the hour, we will be responding to your questions through the current FAQ. The FAQ is on our homepage, and we'll update it with responses to these questions within the next two days, so look for that. And now I'm going to move into, I actually skipped this slide, but we'll go to our last slide. Want to thank you again for your participation, but before you sign off, I want to remind you of a timeline for the vote on the restructure and how you can continue to participate. So on May 15, that's this Thursday, we're going to be emailing the ballot to all members with four different items to vote on, and we talked about them earlier in the hour. Those include the name change, the mission, the governance structure, and the governance transition. On June 15, a whole month later, that is the deadline for the vote, and we will close the vote. And then by June 16, the next day, we will share the results of the four separate votes to the membership. So we'll be sending you that via email. If the membership approves these votes, we'll begin launching elements of the restructure just about right away, realistically probably beginning in the beginning of July and through the end of the year, through December 2014. There's three more things that you can do to participate in this process. We invite you to go out, if you haven't already, to our homepage at ashaweb.org. There's a whole resource center of materials related to the restructure where you can find everything that we've got about it. You can look at those resources there, and if you have any questions beyond what you've asked today, please send them to us via email at heleschoolsnow@asha web.org. Let me say that again. Heleschoolsnow@asha web.org. Again, the vote is going to be occurring between May 15 and June 15. Thank you for your time today. This concludes our Town Hall meeting.